First, 2015, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spade.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the September 8th meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second motion and second corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been approved. We have one registrant for the public appearances section. If you could please come to the podium, Ms. Wellman. Ann Wellman, 4529 Winnicquah Road, would like to speak in favor of a wildlife resolution. Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. I will pass out, I have copies of other resolutions from other communities and one that has been brought forward to the public safety that was written up by individuals, that has written many other resolutions.
I can question out for you.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Let's talk about, I'm sorry.
That's quarter.
There you go. So, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to this. I'm going to begin by talking about public trust. It's a trust that's created for the promotion of public welfare and is not for the benefit of one or more individuals. It's for everyone. A community should make sure that public trust is available for all its citizens. Public trust is essential for any individual in order that they may benefit equally in their community. The actions of my neighbor goes against public trust and directly infringes on any moral and/or ethical belief regarding the cruelty of animals. A trust that we as humans hold that should benefit nature. Nature is not owned by humans. Nature is shared with humans regardless of private property ownership. Public, sorry, baiting, enticing, trapping, and killing of fur-bearing animals in Monona does not promote public trust. I am uncomfortable having to watch as squirrels and chipmunks are lured to their death by a human. I am uncomfortable having to hear the sounds of their futile attempts to be free. I am uncomfortable knowing that I can do nothing but wait until that human has decided that he is coming back to the trap and he will free that defenseless animal by drowning it, in my view, in the view of all neighbors. I've brought the concern forward to public safety. No action was concluded that would restore my faith that public trust is being promoted or supported by this community. That is why I'm here tonight. I've given you handouts showing three communities in the state of Wisconsin that have some form of wildlife management that can contrail this type of behavior. Today, I also found four other communities. Whitewater, Glendale, Middleton, not to be far away from us, and Hudson. I've also given you a resolution that was written up by someone in the wildlife industry for the protection of animals. Another concern that has been brought forward, which I worry about, is the safety of the people who are trapping these animals themselves and feel that they can just deal with this however they feel. And then we have an issue of rabies or another form of cruelty to animals. So I'll start with this morning. Seven o'clock in the morning, a trap is rattling outside of my bedroom window. That trap was not attended to until 10 o'clock in the morning. The trap was taken down to the lake, dropped in the water for approximately two minutes, and the animal was drowned. I do not know where that carcass went. Again, 11 o'clock, the trap rattles. That animal is still in the trap as I stand here. The gentleman is eating his dinner, enjoying TV. I will go to bed tonight with a trap rattling outside of my bedroom window. There is no public trust in this. We have a moral obligation as a community that killing animals is not condoned and it's not tolerated as a form of personal animal control. As adults, we should be setting examples for our children. That killing of animals is not respectful of nature. I hope that this community here is able to have some type of discussion that could end this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker?
None of the speaker.
Okay, Alder Wood.
The members of the Public Safety Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Was, first was...
Alder Holmquist and Thomas, is that correct?
Yeah. Was this item on the public safety agenda and if so, was a vote taken on it?
It was on the agenda previously to the last public appearance section. At that prior one, there was no action taken at the first meeting and that is when Ms. Wellman wrote a letter to the editor in the paper. And then after that is when there were a group of individuals both in favor and registering not in favor to appear, but the item was not on the agenda at that time.
Alder Thomas.
However, the chair, Alderman Holmquist, asked the committee if anybody wanted it put on the agenda for further discussion and nobody on the committee wanted it to put on... I mean, there was a mix of... Do I want to say balanced?
So, the concern arose that there were a variety of animals that are considered in the fur-bearing category and many are in the rodent category. So from like an insurance claim standpoint of how do you control rodents? And then there was kind of an extension when the model ordinance was presented. It included nesting birds and a variety of other areas where there are some state protections in place. So it was kind of creeping into other areas, more than just the original concern. That she has already talked to this individual. The police have talked to this individual. What he's doing isn't illegal. It's not illegal here and it's not illegal from the state standpoint. He is controlling squirrels and chipmunks on his property is the way it's looked at.
Mayor, if I could, not to interrupt, but we should make clear that this item isn't on the agenda. So you can certainly ask questions of the speaker and discuss procedurally the background, but the substance of her proposal or the topic really needs to be foregone to another meeting that's properly noticed so the public could appear.
Right. Which... That was kind of the point of my question was, given its status before public safety, which it sounds like it's not going to be taken up again there, is it... Would it come here, which...
Yeah. My plan is, my plan was, and I've spoken with Bill, was, because as I found out, public safety was not going to take it back. And I'm going to ask that, I'm going to put it on the agenda, either two council members or I, but I'm going to put it on the agenda at the next meeting for the council.
Great. I would support that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. There are no other appearances this evening. Under the consent agenda, item F1, approval of applications for operators licenses, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The applications are approved. Item G, unfinished business, there is none. There are several items in new business. First, two A's, consideration of Class B fermented malt beverage and wine license applications for Mr. Brew's Tap House of Monona, the LLC known as Mr. Brew's Tap House, located, brand-new restaurant at 103 West Broadway, was brought forth by the License Review Committee. Alder Wood.
Yep. Both this and the next two item, the next item were approved by the License Review Committee at its last meeting. One question I, and I don't recall what he said, I think we asked when they expected to open and I don't recall.
We have Mr. Brew's in the audience this evening. If you want to come up to the podium.
I know, I recognize him.
Have an opportunity to put in a commercial plug for your new facility. If you could introduce yourselves too, please.
Good evening. My name's Jay Clemens. It's my, Ozzy Clemens. The two of us are owning and operating the Mr. Brew's franchise for Monona.
Okay, and Alder Wood's question was the opening date?
We plan to have occupancy and open October 23rd, depending on construction, hopefully, possibly before, but maybe later.
Okay. Okay. Are you...
Anything else?
Well, the reason I was asking is whether it would make sense to suspend the rules on this, so...
Second.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion, Alder Wood?
I did, yes.
Okay, and it's been seconded. There's a motion to suspend the rules and take this item out of order. All those in favor, suspension of the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended. Is there a motion for approval this evening?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, second for approval. Now we can have discussion. Are there any other questions of the owners? Yes, Alder O'Connor.
Maybe it's on here, I'm not seeing it. How many people does the patio seat?
Forty.
One thing that has come up, are you aware, there are some concerns about traffic flows, so I don't know if there's anything that can be done internally about all the traffic routing out in front of Tully's.
We've, public work system addressed that?
That has been taken care of, or, there's a plan.
Well, the plan is that it has to go back to Plan Commission because there's nothing that would preclude them from going in or out of that, that point that, that they were talking about. But there's a curve on it that, but that's on private property and that is a...
Whose property, the hotels or Tully's? The hotels.
The hotels. And so it is really a alteration to the parking lot, which has to go through the Plan Commission. We're out of it, but, but, but the Public Works Committee has no problem with them going in or out of that.
The curve or going further down?
We, we don't deal with the curve. It's the ingress egress.
Okay.
Point on Monona Drive.
Is it coming to Plan Commission or...
Not yet. I know that they've approached Plan staff and that if they do come, they're going to have to have their engineering and everything else done. I think, I'm guessing there has to be a...
And they really don't have to, do they?
I don't know who intends to pay for all this.
Right, right.
They have to, they, that's, it's not the city's expense.
No.
Because it's private property.
And I wouldn't think the hotel would want to incur the expense because they obviously are very happy with their tenants or their neighbors.
The hotel was there. The, the, the point is that we did pay, the city did pay $37,000, I think, or $32,000 for...
That curve?
No, no, to have an easement across the Tully's property for any and all users on that parcel to access, to use that as, as, to cut through to the other entrance.
Okay.
We paid, the city paid for that at the time and it wasn't just for the hotel, it was for anybody who, who located on that parcel.
The public.
So, what I'm hearing, it might just be as-is.
It could change. It's up to the hotel. It's up to who's going to pay for it. They have to go through Plan Commission with the engineering studies. But, but we don't care. From a public work standpoint, our piece was, could they go in and out of that driveway and we, and it's fine with us.
I guess it's just important you're aware of, it's an interesting little twist and turn. You're at an incredible intersection, but you're also at an incredible intersection and it's not the easiest at times to get in and out, being careful. So, I'm not sure if there's anything you can really do but to make your clientele aware to be careful, you know, because there is concern from some of your neighbors about traffic flows going in and out, so. Alder Wood?
Yeah, I guess when this development, the Tap House and the Qdoba next door, when those were approved at Plan Commission, was there a limitation put on the use of the driveway on Broadway? So if, I don't know who controls it, but...
It was, my understanding was, and there, I think there were five meetings before Plan Commission, that Tully's never came and raised the issue.
Kind of on a tangent, yeah. Five to seven, yeah.
It wasn't until everything, all approvals, they were well underway that the concerns were raised and I think Public Safety and others were willing to take a look at it and what I'm hearing, they took a look at it and have reviewed everything and...
Yeah, so it doesn't, doesn't sound like, as long, I mean, whoever controls the use of that, the driveway on Broadway could decide to make it in and out. I mean, I assume it is now, I guess, I don't know.
No, no, it's not an in, it's an out because it's curved.
But, but it, there's nothing, there's, as I said, if I were driving down the street, there's no sign that says I can't go in or that I can't go out. But, but some think that the curve makes it friendlier. But it wouldn't prohibit you from doing it now.
Trucks get kind of kinked in there at times. We've had problems with big delivery trucks, you know. So I, I promise I will be a very attentive user when I drive through your facility and hopefully those are the only kind of customers that you cater to are attentive drivers that, because there is a lot of pedestrian traffic will be going through that parking lot and everything. Any other questions?
Mayor, before there's a vote, the application requires the applicant to include a map and the dimensions of the patio. I don't see it in here. I don't know if one's on file with the clerk.
License review, do review that.
Okay. It's just important that we know where it is and the size because that's what you're going to be licensed to serve alcohol on.
I have a copy, I think, of the licensing.
Could you just bring it up and Alder Holmquist will be more than happy to help?
But it should be attached to the minutes.
It, it should. Are we, are we on B or A?
Yeah, we're still on...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, then I spoke out of turn.
So, we'll do A and then we'll move right on to B. Is there further discussion regarding item A? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It has been approved, moving on to B, which is the patio permit for the Tap House.
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
There's a motion, second, suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. I think you might need to zoom on the end. It's the knob on the end. We'll zoom her down so we can see it. Is that patio... Where's the patio on there?
Can't see the screen here, but the patio is here.
Okay. You want to slide that some more than Brian, please? There we go. All right. And the hours of the patio?
They are, they open at 11:00 a.m. and then will close at 9:00 per the city ordinance.
Mayor, we, we did have this documented, License Review. One thing, it might not be clear with the outside, what looks like it's beyond the patio, there actually is a missing couple of lines on there. There will be a fence enclosing the entire patio.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the fence will go here. It's slightly inside and not as, as far outside as the rest of it because there is a bike rack we're putting in place out there.
Good.
And then runs the length of all these columns here and then here. And then there's two points of egress or exit gates here and here.
Alder Bussie?
Was the fence addressed at Plan?
Plan Commission did not require a fence. They're doing the fence on their own, on their own plan.
If there, should Plan Commission review the fence? I think they should.
License review.
No, not the fact that the fence is going out, but Plan Commission approved this without a fence. If the fence is going in, is it a orange snow fence like the Fourth of July Festival or is it something that's going to be consistent with the quality that's being constructed?
I don't have the ordinance memorized. I think the ordinance requires a fence unless it's excused.
I understand it. I'm not, I'm not saying that one isn't allowed or required, but I don't think Plan has reviewed...
They have to approve that the...
What type of fence it is.
That's fine.
So it could be contin...
Could, okay.
What I would, what I would like to do is...
Make a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment that this be contingent upon Plan review and approval of the, of the fencing material.
Are the makers of the motion and the second in agreement?
Discussion?
Can it, can it be Stafford? Does it need to be the whole commission?
Yeah, I think Plan, I wouldn't want to put Stafford on the hot seat.
Okay, there's a friendly amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Second the amendment. Discussion on the amendment of having the fence be approved?
On the approved documents that were attached on the meeting minutes for liquor licensing?
Yeah, that's, that's separate from the Plan Commission.
But that's not Plan Commission, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Thought I could say that our architect said that it was approved.
Your plan was, but it sounds like the fence was...
If it's been, if it's been approved and my memory, my memory is failing, then you're home free.
What, what I think he's saying is that it's changed since it went to Plan Commission because it didn't have the fence on it when it went to Plan.
Not a problem. Nope, I just...
And assuming the qualities of this, the integrity, I don't think it's going to be a problem, but we just need to follow proper process. So there's a motion, second for the amendment? Is there discussion on the amendment? Yep.
Well, I have a question about the initial, I just wonder what side of the building it's on.
The west side of the building.
West side.
Opposite of Monona Drive.
Yep.
Right.
It is in the minutes that talks about the patio includes a stamped concrete surface and wrought iron fences and a cedar trellis.
From Plan?
From Plan. This is from Plan, July 26th.
Then it's been approved. I withdraw my, so is that which Plan putting in, is the wrought iron?
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's there? Good, I withdraw my friendly amendment.
So that's been, so we're back to the original motion. Is there additional questions? Alder Thomas?
Will there be video cameras overlooking the...
Yes, ma'am.
Visible to the bartenders?
We'll have video cameras inside and outside.
I mean, who, who looks at what's on the cameras?
Management, as well as our ownership will be paying attention to the cameras.
So where are the, where are the, all I remember is in the past what we've had, sometimes when we've done this and we've had cameras, they had to be visible to the bartenders so they could monitor what was going on out there.
Alder Wood?
I don't know how their monitoring system is going to be set up, but on the patio ordinance, it does require that waitstaff serve the people that are on the patio. So there will be waitstaff out there fairly frequently.
But, so where is the, the video cameras? Where are the screens for the, that you would watch the, what's taking place out there?
We have a screen in our office as well as we're able to access everything via the internet through a computer app on our phone or tablet.
That's consistent. I know for sure with Tully's that they have a separate room where I think Sherry actually monitors the cameras from that location.
We also have large windows off the entire patio, so even if you are at the bar, you can see a majority of the patio.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are all set. We look forward to joining you on October, what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, all right. I got to get that on my calendar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2C, you will notice starred for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 15-9-2048, which is exercising an option to purchase real estate located at 6406 Bridge Road. This is part of the Riverfront Development Project. Is there a motion, suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion, second, suspend the rules? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second. Attorney Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, this is one of the parcels in the Riverfront Development. It's the EDS building. We, the city through a development LLC holds an option to purchase that property. It's a two-year option in order to induce the seller to grant a second year of the option. We had to include a provision in there whereby he could market the property that second year and he, if he received an offer, we would then have 30 days to either exercise our option or terminate our option rights. They have received a, a offer, they've notified us, we have until, until October 8th to exercise our option to purchase the property. Our option rights, we would purchase it at the, under the terms of our option. We're not, this isn't a right of first refusal, we're not matching their offer. We're buying under our own offer, which the terms are substantially similar, slightly more beneficial to us, but substantially similar.
Questions? This was approved early this evening at Personal and Finance. Alder O'Connor?
Is anyone in that building?
Yep, there's a church and there's also a health club. And there may be more, but I know of the two of them and...
Is that why during...
No, that, all those cars?
Yeah.
All those cars are because the apartment's parking lot has been, being redone and was torn out. I think it's completed now, so I think the traffic will get to be a little more normal on Bridge, but they were parking because it was all, the parking lots were torn up at the apartment complex. And just one for what it's worth, but my understanding was the offer of the new, the offer that was made to them was higher than what our option is, so I took that as a good sign that, that people want that land and are willing to pay more. pay more than, I guess, compliments to the negotiating team. Attorney Cole for what we were able to acquire that for. And the way that deal will be handled is similar to how we handled Chase Bank. We will take a short-term loan out until it becomes part of the development plan, which hopefully will have a development plan going, coming forth this fall yet. Further questions? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Aldus Wood?
Aye.
Aldus Spate?
Aye.
Aldus O'Connor?
Aye.
Aldus Holmquist?
Aye.
Aldus Thomas?
Aye.
Aldus Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Reports of committees? Aldus Holmquist?
No report.
Aldus Thomas?
No report.
Aldus Bussie?
Plan Commission next Monday, 7:00 here.
All right. Aldus O'Connor?
No report.
Aldus Spate?
No report.
Aldus Wood?
Only to report that the library director's wife gave birth to a new child late last week, I believe it was, Friday?
Friday. An additional note to that, I knew nothing about this pregnancy and Eric attended his budget meeting right on time. It was very relaxed, didn't say a word. I got home that night after doing budgets and there he was posing with a brand-new baby and I like, wow! That is one heck of a wife and he's one calm daddy that, it was really weird.
It was child number three, so that might have happened.
Yeah, I guess, yes. The novelty had worn.
First one was in the parking garage in the hospital. They made it this time.
They made it all the way in.
Reports of staff? City clerk?
No report, Mayor.
Acting city administrator?
Just to talk about the budgets, we did go over the capital budgets with the mayor, department heads. We got a couple of finishing touches on there, but that will be out at our next meeting in October. And we'll have to figure out if we're going to do a meeting before the next, first meeting in Monday. We will have a committee of the whole here. We'll figure that out here pretty soon, but we, it's either going to be in the first October meeting or we'll have one next week or something to that effect.
Yes.
I have a request with the capital budget when it comes to this group. Can we also have what was approved for the capital budget for this year and what was spent year-to-date?
Yeah, we can have that, yeah.
That's good. Attorney Cole?
No report.
All I have to report is status on the hiring of the city administrator. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday evening, we will have the first meeting, the resumes closed last Fri, or the filing or application period closed last week. I think we have 34, 32 applicants, so something like that. A few more came. They are from hither and yon, from all coasts and lands in between. Two current employees have applied, which I take as complimentary to the city and a number of nearby communities. So again, I take as complimentary to Manona that people have interest from neighboring communities. Aldus Wood?
Just wanted to raise a point on the current schedule and maybe we can talk about this Tuesday night at the ad hoc committee. But the current, current schedule is interview finalists and select a first choice on October 23rd and 24th. That's a Friday and Saturday. And my understanding is both Aldus O'Connor and Thomas will not be in town, either of them on the 23rd. I think Kathy might be back on the 24th, so we might want to-
So you're back on the 24th?
Well, I haven't scheduled my flight home, but I told my son I'd be there for the 22nd, so.
Well, we'll try to, I mean, I think, I would assume we have flexibility on that. That was just the beginning of the process, so let's bring that up.
Yep.
If everyone who, take a look at those dates and look at your calendars and that following week, if you're going to be gone, please, I know Aldus Spate sent me some dates, but please be real clear on those and we'll try to make sure everyone can make it.
Yeah, the other question came up. If we have out-of-town candidates, are we going to fly them in or are we going to do a teleconference with them?
Hasn't been. I've not, I don't think we're going to be flying them in. I think I'd like to see the process go and see if any of those candidates are going to be. Again, the process, what happened last time, as I remembered, was they'll debrief. This firm does a pretty thorough vetting of these candidates and they'll go through and we'll narrow it down tomorrow night to 10. And then those 10 are what the council will get involved in selecting the three finalists or two or whatever number we so desire. And I think it would be at that point in time, we would decide that. Aldus O'Connor?
So the dates you want to know would be like the week of October 26th?
Yeah, I would assume it would be after the dates that are currently proposed. Yeah, I don't think we want to rush or do it quicker and I don't think a few days, one way or the other, will. Mark is doing, I might add, an exemplary job that, that, no, actually staff has been exceptional to work with and they keep me up to date on, I know far more about the city now than I've ever known. I don't know if that's good or bad on any given day. Further questions about that? That's all I have to report. Are there any, I didn't look, are there appointments? There are no appointments. Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.